Here.
Waters.
Here. Can we stand for a moment a silent prayer followed by the pledge of allegiance, please? Amen?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have no proclamations and we have no interviews, so we'll go right to the agenda, which today, the consent agenda is items two through 12F. If you want to speak on one of those items, please come up as I read it and state your name and address for the record. You want to speak on an item not on the agenda, please come up under Citizen Concerns. Again, state your name and address for the record. I'll move the consent agenda.
Second.
Two is a reading of the city council minutes of March 18th, 2019. I'd like to abstain, I was not here. Three is a motion approving an award for the Hunt Elementary School Site Improvements Project.
Need to abstain? Conflict of interest?
Yes.
What's number four?
Yeah.
I think I'll abstain on that one. What do you think?
I'll move ahead, then. This better be the last one for a while. Four is a resolution temporarily closing various streets in the downtown area on April 10th for tolerance week at the Orpheum Theater. Five is a resolution awarding a purchase order to Suland Concrete for concrete products to public work and utilities. Six is actions adopting construction documents. A is a resolution adopting construction documents for the Glen Avenue Reconstruction Project. What's the timeline on this? Every time we bid this, it's run way over. I don't think anybody's ever completed one of these on time.
Gordon Ferris, City Engineer. Are you referring to Glen or your utility lining?
No, Glen.
Yeah. The timeline on that one, it's going to be a two-year proj-
For that little bit?
Yeah. Broken up into two calendar years.
You're only going to Ruston, which is down the bottom of the hill, to where you left off up above.
Correct. And we are going almost all the way to 75.
75, yeah.
Right.
What is the two-year, just that stretch from the stop sign to the bottom of the hill? And then the next one is from the bottom of the hill to 75? Is that how it's broken up? I didn't remember it was two-
It stops right there between, uh-
Starts on South Cecilia, doesn't it?
Yes.
It stops on South Cecilia now, but there only must be going to like Steel now. Maybe-
Not sure on the actual-
Maybe Ruston. That Ruston's down at the bottom of the hill.
Ruston, South Cecilia. But we're stopping at the, um-
Entrance to the shopping center.
Um, well, almost there, yes.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, but we are putting sidewalk to that entrance. So that continues on just outside the-
On the hill.
The street.
On the hill.
Yes.
That's the first phase, and then the next phase goes to 75?
No. First phase starts there, at, um, near that entrance.
Seventy-five side.
At South Ruston?
At South-
At the bottom, yeah.
Yeah, west of South Ruston. And it goes to the alleyway, which is right next to South Ruston. That portion. And then there's a small portion up on Alice that they're doing with the, combined with the church entrance. And then the next phase is-
Going back east.
East of there, yeah.
But how far east then? Just a-
To Cecilia, South Cecilia.
So what is that?
Two blocks?
That's, yeah, two blocks.
Or one.
It's a decent, because we're bidding it late in the year, too, so they're not going to get a start on it until July.
God. I still don't understand. I don't think, you still have it right. It sounds like you're going to go basically from Cecilia down to Ruston, then next year you're going Ruston over to Lewis Boulevard.
Yeah.
Essentially.
Flip-flopped, yes. We're starting on the other end, the-
It's the west end?
Seventy-five side.
The west end. We're starting on the west end.
Okay.
Moving east.
Okay.
Gosh, and so if we bid this differently, do you think it would have been able to do in one construction season? Because that is a long time.
Yeah, well, yeah, if we would have started, if we could have bid it sooner in the year, but we had to go through the DOT process, so it takes for that funding.
Yeah.
But we had to hit their deadlines, and we had to get some easements.
Yeah, no, I remember. I remember that. I'm not-
Yeah.
I just wondered what-
And during the public meeting, they asked for us to break it up at that point.
Okay.
Because they were able to take it, and weren't they able to come through the alley or get around to that street, right? Or was it-
Yes. There was a couple of homeowners that would have a hard time getting to their bags, so.
Okay. B is a resolution adopting plans and specifications for the annual utility lining project. Seven are actions relating to A, to bonds. A is a resolution approving a post issuance compliance policy. B is a resolution approving a revised debt management policy. C is a resolution approving bond disclosure policy. D is a resolution approving a bond council and disclosure, council engagement agreement with Aylers and Cooney. E is a resolution declaring the intent to issue debt to reimburse the city for expenditures paid for specific projects. Eight are actions relating to agreements and contracts. A is a resolution approving a contract to Barclay Asphalt for the annual resurfacing project, Phase Two. B is a resolution approving Amendment Number Two to the agreement with H.R. Green for the Outer Drive North and Floyd Boulevard Trail Connection. C is a resolution approving a contract to T.R. Harris Construction for the Lewis and Clark Parking Lot. D is a resolution approving Amendment Number Four to the agreement with Smith Group for the Chris Larson Park Riverfront Development. I'd like to pull that and vote on it separately, please.
I actually have some questions on it, too. Please. Matt, my question, I guess, stems from, at what point in time, is there ever a time when we would normally, like, rebid this or relook at it, or what companies are able to do? Because, and hear me, I guess my side of it is, I understand that the design services and kind of walking through that initial step, and then the scope changed, and then we included more public meetings and input. I understand the other stuff up until this point, but is there a point, I mean, now it feels like, okay, we're moving into a much different step and realm, and they've been with us that whole way. I understand. But if we thought that we were going to bid it as, look, you're doing the pre, and then you're doing during and post and all this stuff, would we, would it have been smarter to bid it that way? Because now it feels like, look, we've been with you all this time, you better stick with us, and we're going to charge you X.
We wanted, Matt Salvatore, Parks and Recreation Director, we wanted to kind of see where we were going to fall in line with current phases that Smith Group was working on, plus future phases. So we kind of got a ballpark figure on what their services would be throughout the duration of the project. And the current proposal falls in line with those proposals. For this $3 million phase, their fee is roughly 11%, which we were comfortable with. So I think we're to the point where we're, can't, they've already designed the whole thing through 35%. We can't really use their designs with a different company, as long as our fees are in line.
Does it make sense, then, that it's just like, well, why don't you just bid and say it's going to cost this and run with it? You know what I mean? Instead of all of the amendments and change order, I guess, because then if they came in and said it was going to be $500,000, I guess you just deny it?
Well, we don't have fund-
And you just that, you go towards-
Yeah, we don't have funding for the entire project, so we're doing a design agreement for what we have-
Phase one, yeah, yeah, yeah.
What we have funding for.
Yep.
So the rest of the-
And that makes sense that you-
The future phases will be dictated on what funding we have available. So it's a guessing game. Yes.
Yeah, because you couldn't bid it as all the way through phase whatever, how many phases are there?
Three.
Three, that's what I thought. So it, yeah, I suppose.
If we started over, we'd be duplicating work that was, that's already been done.
Thank you, Matt.
I'm going to vote against this, I'll tell you upfront, Matt. I think your road system, your parking problems are going to be unbelievable, and I got to tell you, that feature that they came up with, to me, the Ferris wheel makes more sense. I don't buy that. That's such a great feature that's going to draw people off the road. In fact, I tell you, it's not going to draw anybody off the road, in my opinion, and you're going to spend $12 million. I want it something that would really catch my eye going by, and I think you're creating a maintenance nightmare with that water feature in the, in those columns that they're proposing. I just am not buying this whole concept, so, sorry.
Well, and I have to ask, too, this is just for Phase One, more of the-
Doesn't matter, you're buying this program today. You understand that. You're buying their program today. You need, you need to understand that.
Would you say that's accurate, Matt, as far as what was last presented with? Because I do have great concerns about, as far as maintenance, because everything I've seen with fountains, both privately and public fountain, other things like that is, I mean, you can look at Titan, the Rock Fountain, Tyson Fountain, all kinds of fountains, just where they're not effective or not working. I mean, are we saying that as, as was presented to us, what, in January or something?
Yeah. The plan in January was to move forward with this River Lights concept. That has been designed at a very low level. We would still have the opportunity to change, but the current direction is the River Lights. So if there's a strong desire to go a different direction, Phase One, we really wouldn't have anything to do with that. It would all be privately funded, but if that's the consensus of the council, we need to take a strong look at that. And Fountain Tech is the subconsultant for their fountain concept, and they regard it as one of the top fountain consultants in the nation.
I don't, yeah.
I just worry about with our climate, if that's the best thing.
I worry about the same thing with the Ferris wheel, so.
Yeah.
Guarantee there'd be less maintenance on a Ferris, I'm not for the Ferris wheel. I don't want you to think that necessarily I am, but there'd be less maintenance on it than there will be on this thing.
I worry more about the liability on the Ferris wheel. So.
That's the case, there wouldn't be carnage all over the world.
I just think, yeah, I'm, I would, I would like to make sure that we look at that and the projections, and I want to know what it's done in that climate or this climate.
I have a memo from the architect on all the research and effort that's been put into that. I can send that on to the council for your review.
I would appreciate it.
Yeah.
How are we voting here?
I'll call the vote on- Greckin?
Aye.
Moore?
Aye.
Scott?
No.
Waters?
Aye.
Capron?
Aye.
E, resolution approving an agreement with Walker Consultants for the Heritage Park Ramp Repairs. F is a resolution renewal option number two for Charis for Sodium per Magnate Solution. G is a resolution approving renewal option number two with high chem for coagulate, coagulant. H is a resolution approving renewal option number two for Hawkins for Potassium per Magnate. Nine are actions relating to personnel. A is a resolution amending the salary schedule for seasonal personnel by adding labor and facilities attendant. B is a resolution amending the salary schedule for ASME by deleting labor and facilities attendant positions. Ten are actions authorizing the issuance of checks. A is a resolution authorizing final payment to Thompson Innovation for Water Facility Skate of Process Upgrades. I'd like to abstain. B is a resolution authorizing payment to Robert Lazard for the Woodbury County Sheriff for land to be used for the Bridgeport West Improvement Project. I'd like to abstain. Eleven are applications for beer and liquor license. See the list, come forward if you have any questions. Twelve are receipt of minutes. See the list, come forward if you have any questions. Anyone to be heard on any of those items, please come forward. Seeing none, we'll vote.
On your electronic panels?
Thank you.
He's trying to convince me to even more.
What are you doing with all these words over here?
Yeah, you know, you know that word.
Both sides have passed five, zero, unless otherwise voted on. Twenty thirteen is a hearing ordinance vacating the alley of the block bounded by Center, 20th and 21st Street, and Perry Creek and Attractive Center Street. The petitioner is Lance Britton. P&amp;Z recommends denial. I'll move the item.
Second.
Go ahead.
Yeah, Michelle Bossnell, Chair of Planning and Zoning Commission. We did deny or recommend denial of this item. As presented to us, and the P&amp;Z agreed with the city staff, that the Parks and Rec Department plans to use the portion off Center Street, that triangle piece, to improve the park improvements and, and connect the trail. And then the alleyway there, the other portion of it, some very, some, some few other things going on there. There's some new trees planted in there, and that's been used for the mitigation of the Perry Creek project. And then also, there's a 30-inch sanitary main and water main in that area as well. So based on those reasons, our recommendation was to deny the vacation.
Public hearing is now open. Would anybody like to speak for or against this ordinance? So please come forward. Seeing none, the hearing is now closed. If you want to affirm the action of the P&amp;Z, you'll vote no.
If we want to affirm the action of P&amp;Z-
P&amp;Z, you'll vote no. See how good I did that for? And that?
I was going to ask again, because I'm always a little confused.
At the action fails. Fourteen are hearings. Hearing of the HUD Sioux City Consortium Year-In Five-Year Action Plan. I'll move that.
Okay.
Go ahead.
Jill Waterside Neighborhood Services Manager. This plan outlines our spending of CDBG and home funds over the next year that starts July 1. We're anticipating about $1.6 million in CDBG and about $430,000 in home funds. We did hold a public meeting about a month ago, and we do have a draft plan available for review by the public for the next 30 days, here at our city hall, at Dakota City, and South Sioux City City Halls as well.
Public hearing is now open. Would anybody like to speak for or against this item? Please come forward. Seeing none, the hearing is now closed. Passes five, zero. Fifteen is a hearing and resolution approving plans and specifications for the Wesley Parkway Sidewalk Widening Project. I'll move that.
Second.
Public hearing is now open. Would anybody like to speak for or against the resolution? Seeing none, we'll close the hearing. I voted there.
I'm going to abstain on that item. Conflict of interest.
It's a new deal, just keep voting.
I was going to say, I was like, Mayor's reading his notes now, or what?
Don't worry about it, I'm doing my job today.
We appreciate it.
Passes four to one, or four to zero to one, Mr. Moore abstains. Sixteen is a hearing and resolution approving plans and specification for the Tyson Video and Scoreboard System Project. I'll move it.
Second.
Public hearing is now open. Would anybody like to speak for or against the item? Seeing none, the hearing is closed. You have a problem with it, Mr. Waters? Talk to your city attorney. It passes five to zero, following instructions.
I really did, she was behind that.
Seventeen is a hearing and resolution approving plans and specification for the Suland Expo Center Project. I'll move that.
Second.
Anyone to be heard on this item, to speak for or against it? Seeing none, the hearing is closed. Passes five, zero. Eighteen is a hearing and resolution approving plans and specification for the Christopher Road Sidewalk Improvements Project. Move it.
Second.
Public hearing is open. If you'd like to speak, please come forward. Hearing is now closed. Passes five, zero. Nineteen is a hearing and resolution approving plans and specifications for the Pier Street Reconstruction Project. Somebody else can move it, I'm not voting for this.
Second.
Public hearing is now open. Would anybody like to speak for or against the resolution? I have a question. You just bid a project with the school board right in this neighborhood. Why in the world did we not bid these two projects together? I mean, it makes, sometimes I don't, even when I'm not for a project, it makes more sense to have bid, you're going to have two contractors working within feet of each other, right? They tie together almost.
We're actually, we've staged it so that the, um, the two contractors, if there are two different ones that aren't going to be conflicting with that project.
It never worked that way, and we all know that. That's, good intentions on your part never become reality on the part of the citizens. It's never, nobody's ever gone in these crappy redo jobs and ever finished them on time. I mean, I can, how many examples do you need? Morningside Avenue, Glen Avenue, Pier Street, Nebraska Street. How many examples have we ever finished one on time? So you're going to have conflicts up there. Would it have not been better to bid them together and have the same contractor be responsible so when you have these conflicts?
Ideally, yes. We weren't at that point prepared for that.
All right.
Gordon, can you, I've had a couple of questions about the staging, asked of me. Can you tell me what Stage One is and what Stage Two is?
Give me a second here, I'll pull that up. I've got several copies of that. Put one in here. We're going to go ahead and put it on the screen for-
Thank you.
Well, Stage One is down there on the bottom of the screen, from 18th to halfway to 19th. Like I said, we coordinated this with, it's the same engineer for both the school and the city for the Pier Street. So we worked, worked that out so that we have, Stage One is going from 18th to almost 19th. Then we jump up to 21st to 22nd, plus a little. That'll be for Stage Two. Oh, is there a Stage 1A? Oh, yep, at the top. The top is Stage 1A, that's 24th to 22nd. That's very northern end. Then we have Stage Two, and then we go down to Stage Three, which is back down to 19th. And then Stage Four will be right around 20th. Four, three, four will be in calendar year 2020. The others will be this year.
So Stage One just goes from 18th to about mid-block, in the 1800 block?
Yes.
Okay. And 1A is up above, and then back down to three, and?
So there's, there's some jumping around to avoid, huh?
And I think that's what the inquiry was about, but thank you very much, I appreciate it.
Passes four to one, I vote no. The hearing is closed. Sorry. Hearing resolution for the Jones Street Public Improvements Project, I'll move it.
Second.
Hearing's open, anyone to be heard. Seeing none, the hearing is closed. Passes five, zero. Twenty-one is an ordinance amending Chapter 2.044 of the municipal code to provide a new salary for mayor and city council members. First consideration passed March 4th, 2019. Second consideration passed March 12th, 2019, deferred from March 18th, 2019. Is there a motion?
Make a motion.
There a second?
Hold on a second.
This is not a hearing, so why do I say that stuff, right?
Come on, Mayor, yeah, wait a minute.
You're so funny.
Did you want to speak or say anything?
I will after the vote.
I'll speak after the vote.
It passes three to two. Mr. Greckin and Mr. Moore voting no. Twenty-two is an ordinance amending-
One second.
Pardon me?
Just one second. I didn't think Rhonda wanted to say something. I know I wanted to say something. This is something that, a decision that I did not take lightly, and I'm, I am glad that we did multiple readings to think about this. I heard from multiple members of multiple constituents really going either way, both in support as well as against. I understand that, that it's a difficult job and a difficult decision, and I thought to myself, you know, what is the basis of people receiving raises in the public of, maybe all of you sitting in these seats today? I think you could think of cost of living, insurance, inflation, things like that. Maybe you keep up with that, and hopefully you receive the raises that would offset that, or maybe you do it performance-based. And so you think about, well, based off of performance, maybe that's how you should wager whether or not you receive raises. And I will tell you, I mean, I think that this council has worked extraordinarily hard for their constituents and fought for them. I know if you, if you want to look at, I mean, holding the property taxes, holding them as, as what we, as best we can, the tax levy, and making sure that we're keeping taxes low, what is it, the lowest in 18 years?
18 years.
The lowest in 18 years? So we were able to do that. We also hear a lot about infrastructure projects. We were able to do overlay projects for your city streets by what, Dave, five times the budget? Dave? Oh, Dave fell asleep. Five, no, I'm just kidding. With overlay projects of five times, five times the budget of what it was last year. Not to mention all the meetings, all the things that we, we were asked, I know, just an example, I mean, you think about it this way, I miss at least one, if not two hours of my job every single Monday. I mean, that's just for this meeting. And we probably have three or four other meetings every single week. And so for me, I mean, I think, and then, then maybe you say your argument is, you know what, you're an elected official, you shouldn't be earning raises. And I mean, I guess I understand that as well, but I think then you, you're really deterring the people that are going to run for these offices. And I think that if you also look at the other people holding offices in this county alone, they have a compensation board. They vote on this every single year, every year for their raise. And it's not the headline, it's not what's going to make the news. Right? We don't get that, we don't get that luxury. And quite frankly, this is the first time that I've realized this, was going through this process after speaking with our finance director, that they allow county government to go through a compensation board and allow them to do that. However, the law stipulates that city councils are not allowed to do that. Because what makes the most sense to me, I disagree greatly with this process, that a city council can say, look, we think it's going to be $2,000, we think it's going to be $10,000, and then they get to do it. They get to put it forward for a vote, and as long as they have three votes, guess what? It passes. I think that's wrong. I think you should have something that's multi-year, or, and you give the council the opportunity to vote against it if they think that, but it's a percentage, and it's reasonable, just like what the council, or just like what the Board of Supervisors others would vote on. And the fact that the state law differentiates that and says, no, we'll allow county supervisors and other elected officials to go off this process, but the city council, no, you're on your own. I think that's wrong. And I think that's something that I intend to talk to my legislatures about, and say, this is a process that is flawed, and you need to look at it. I think your council has worked incredibly hard. I think that we, we have done the job by the citizens of this community. I hope you feel the same way, and for that reason, I voted the way I did.
Thanks, Alex. I'm going to add to this a little bit. Alex pretty much covered it all. And I'll tell you what, most of us have been here at least five years. The mayor and I are going to, are, we're going on eight years. This doesn't happen unless, unless you have a council that gets along and that respects each other, and we can agree to disagree at the end of the day. And that's what it's all about to me. But also, as Alex covered, I have a full-time job. I take off from my full-time job because I love what I do for the city, and it costs me money. But I made that choice, and I do it because I love what we do up here. And we, we may not- we do up here. And we, we may not do everything that everybody likes, and I'm okay with that. You have to have a thick skin. That's okay. But we do it for the, for the right, for the right reasons. We do it because we want to move Sioux City ahead. And we've done that. I have, if anybody wants to look at this, I have a whole lot of things that we have done within the last few years. We've come a long ways in a short time. And keeping your, keeping our taxes low, or keeping and not raising our taxes, that's quite a feat. You know, it, it takes all of us working together to make that happen. We have a low crime rate. We have, we're the best new tourism attraction in the state of Iowa. We have the lowest property tax levy in eighteen years. I mean, we go from up here to all the way down here. We try to take care of everybody. And, and we can't do that without having a good council. And if this wouldn't have passed, I would have, I would have understood that too. Because I, I really do enjoy the people that I work with. And, and with that said, we can make decisions, but we can agree to disagree, and still be respectful and friends at, at the end of the day. And to me, that's what it's all about. Could you get more done working together than you do fighting apart? So that's where I'm at.
I publicly have stated I wouldn't take the raise even if I come back, but I do want the public to know that we've changed, dramatically changed the health insurance for our city employees, which I think was long overdue. And the council's going to accept that same change, in my understanding, or at least I'm going to accept that, even though, for me, it'll probably cost me about two thousand dollars a year if I don't take the pay raise, which is fine. I said I wouldn't, and I, I'll stick to that. But I'm not sure it's fair to the rest of the council to have to basically take a two thousand dollar pay cut because of insurance changes that we have asked other employees to take, that we in turn gave them an increase in their package for. So the reason I voted yes is because for at least the council members that'll still be here, I think it's only fair that we equalize that like we did with our other city employees. All right, we will move on to-
That takes effect January one.
Right.
Correct.
Right. But the health insurance takes effect July one.
January first.
January first, okay. So they both would take effect at the same time.
Twenty twenty.
All right, great. That's even better then. Twenty-two is an ordinance amending chapter seven point zero of the municipal code relating to rules governing dog parks. First consideration passed January twenty-eighth, two thousand nineteen, and ended the agenda incorrectly stated January eighth. I'll move second reading. Still not sure this is the solution, but we'll give it a try, right?
Well, you removed a couple of things, did you?
It's basically the same proposal as January with the exception of the, the permit fee. So went back to the Dog Park Committee, back to the Park Board, and it was, it was close at the committee level, but they, both parties agreed to not implement the permit system at this time. And if we feel those changes are necessary in the future, we'll take a look at it.
And, oh, I'm sorry, Dan, go right ahead.
Go ahead.
Well, I was just going to kind of reaffirm my position when we had that discussion passed. Maybe it's been four, five, six weeks since we last discussed that. And, and I'm fine with all the recommendations that the Dog Committee Group came up with, with the exception of the permit system. I think the permit system would allow us to, for my way, to have a locked entrance, hopefully with some kind of FOB system that would track people in and out, so we would know who uses it, who doesn't use it, in the event of, I'm kind of a prevention guy, if it'll make it safer for both the property owners and, are the animal owners and the animals. I think that's a really good way to be able to keep track of how good things are going. And if something does happen, then we've got a starting point for an investigation to figure out what's going on. And, and I just think, again, it would provide a safer environment. So that's, I, I'm, I'm going to vote for it, and, and I respect and thank all of the people who were involved in the committee to come up with the rules and posting the rules and, and utilizing dog park volunteers. That's a good idea, and I hope people get involved, but I, but I am worried that we're asking volunteers to enforce a large number of rules. And I, I, I hope it works fine. I don't want any problems. But I think if people know they're being tracked when they come and go, it'll make it a lot safer for everybody. So with that in mind, if, you know, if anybody wants to weigh in on it, I would certainly consider a change. But absent that, any, anybody else supporting it, I'll, I will support your work and what you're doing out there, and I appreciate it, so.
Well, I have to say that I don't like the permit system. So, I'm sorry.
Is that because I voted no on the previous one?
Yeah, exactly.
Exactly, yeah, none didn't do. I think the permit system would have been a big hassle. And really, we have dog parks for, for people just to, you know, come, enjoy the day, and, and leave. And, and we had one, one incident in twenty years. And, and it was horrible. And I, and I felt really bad for Larry, Larry and his wife and the dog. But with that said, I think that, that people have to be responsible out there, for God's sake, you know?
And let me just add real quickly, it isn't just my personal opinion, but I've talked to a number of people who say that there are lots of things that happen out there that's not as easygoing as one would believe with one incident in twenty years. And, and I think to have, to throw a volunteer in the middle of that is, is, is a challenge, a real challenge. And, and I hope all goes well. And it's a long way out for police to come. Hopefully, they'll be able to get in and out and, and make periodical checks. But, but I do think that if they, if you know you're being watched, I think it helps kind of keep things in line a little better.
Well, here's the other side.
And the other thing is, don't worry about the city clerk's office, because they are more than capable of handling a permit system, I guarantee you.
Oh, I don't doubt that a bit, but I, I don't want to put that much work on you. Because you, you might want to race, and I don't know what we're going to do. Anyway.
City manager, one gimme one.
Yeah, okay.
That job used to be under the city council back then, until city manager got power hungry and grabbed it away from him.
Good for you, Bob.
Only thing, you read the old city ordinance, it was, we had three implorers at one time, now we don't anymore.
I just want to talk about the permits, that's all. Anyway, I just feel that, you know, we do, we do have some small changes, and one of them is small dogs on one side and big dogs on the other. And when people can bring their dogs in on a leash, I think that what they maybe should do is walk the dog around just for a bit, and make sure that they get along with all the dogs that are still on the leash. It's, it's all about being responsible. It just drives me nuts to think that, you know, you walk in there, let your dog run loose real quick, and, and not know what the environment is, is around you, you know? So that's my whole thing. And plus, it, it's going to cost money if you did a permit. Who's going to pay for that? A ten-dollar permit to even get your dog set up, that's crazy. I'm sick of permits. That's all we get, permit this and make money for that. And, you know, then where's it going to go? So that's, I'm done.
Matt, you also changed the age from six to nine years.
That was part of the previous recommendation.
Okay. Do you think it's conflicting? I, I still have a hard time with paragraph eleven, because a handler can be sixteen years old, but children from nine to sixteen need to have adult supervision. Isn't that conflicting? So the sixteen-year-olds handling a dog, they need to have an adult with them? Is that what was intended? I don't think that's what, any handler of a dog must be at least sixteen years of age.
So wouldn't-
So wouldn't it really be kids from nine to fifteen?
Yeah. Well-
The handler is supposed to be sixteen years old.
With adult supervision, though?
No. Sixteen is considered where you can, you can handle a dog by yourself.
It says children from nine years of age, sixteen, must be under the supervision of an adult competent responsible person.
Two sixteen, not sixteen. You got to read that fine like the IRS code, my friend. Seriously, that's why it's seventeen. And two sixteen means that they have not reached sixteen yet.
I don't know.
Well, I'll show you the, I'll show you the IRS code when it says seventeen, because it reads exactly that vague.
The last sentence clarifies that. Any, any handler of a dog must be at least, must, must be at least sixteen years of age.
I'm always amazed how much time we can spend on this, but real issues, we just can't seem to get time to do it.
I, I agree with you, Dan. I think it's kind of conflicting. It really is.
I shouldn't read these proposals.
I'm, I'm open for any amendment, because I don't want to spend any more time on this than we've already spent, so.
Well, make one.
I don't have any. I like it the way it reads.
City attorney, are you saying two sixteen means you're not sixteen? So-
Correct. And they can be present, and I think it's more to the issue, they can be present in the park as long as an adult is there.
Thanks, Matt.
What's an adult nowadays? Has that changed too?
Matt, I would just say I really do appreciate the work you and this committee have put into this. I think it has, and to the mayor's point, been a, a long process.
Yep.
Probably a frustrating.
And I would like to thank our committee and our park board for taking a strong look at this issue. It was a very healthy process for us.
Yeah. I do appreciate it. And I'll be supporting, you know, what you've come up with. I want to be supportive of that. And I think it's some, some common sense things, as well as I think with, to Rhonda's point, I hope, public to use some dog parks. The only thing I would say is, and I think you and I have talked about this offline, but I would say it again, hopefully, we can continue to look at it. The biggest concern I have is that like co-mingling space, you know? If you just, if you just took the fence off of that, you know what I mean, and had the entryway into the small area and into the large area, I just, that's where I really worry about running the risk and having that concern.
Hard to put another entry, though, the way that dog park, you can't, it's on-
If you looked at it, and if you just lower the fence of where that middle one will be, and you put an entrance to where it would be already, the small one would be.
The Dog Park Committee actually likes having that common area where you can introduce dogs and then go to separate areas. We did talk about that at our last meeting.
Hey, that's important, man.
Trust the expert.
And whatever happens, we need to also allow some time for implementation. We have some modifications to do as far as fencing and signs. So I guess we just need to keep that in consideration with your next steps here.
The way that the ordinance is currently drafted is that it's effective upon publication, which is normally this Saturday after.
Well, then, let's vote on second and do a third, okay?
Get her done?
Yeah.
Okay, you're a-
Get it done.
You told me I've already burned up now?
I'm, I'm accepting what the city attorney says.
And we can clarify, if it comes back for a third, mid-May is kind of what we're thinking as far as implementation, I guess should give us enough time.
It's going into effect if we vote today, my friend.
Well, I'm going to move the-
But this is just second.
I'm going to move the third.
We're moving the third.
No, we're moving.
Yeah, we're doing it all.
Can you make it effective middle of May?
Right. Which direction of the council, effective date, whenever you would like to set it, we just seem to modify the ordinances.
Saying you want it to be middle of May or-
We, we, the way that's set up out there right now, there isn't those separate-
Give us a date so we can roll.
May fifteenth.
Okay. Thank you. We're going to vote second. You can make that motion when you do the third. Thank you.
Effective May fifteenth. So move the third reading?
No, we're going to vote on the second reading. We got to do it that way. Already voted.
Well, they-
Not everybody obviously has.
Our other council members.
Are we short one?
He's a little weak.
Glad you're back.
He lost control there.
I know. That passes five zero, I'm going to make the third. Does anybody have a problem waiving the rule?
No, no problem.
No, okay, I'm going to move that third reading with the stipulation this goes into effect May fifteenth, two thousand nineteen.
Okay.
Do we need to waive the rules though by, by a vote first?
Yes.
So you moved to waive the rules, didn't you?
You're right.
Nice second at that.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Moore?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Waters?
Aye.
Capron?
Sure.
Greckin?
Aye.
Now I'll move that effective May fifteenth and third reading. Is there a second?
Yeah, second.
Second.
Okay.
You're just looking at me.
Vote on your panels.
Here, there you go.
Oh, my gosh.
Had it done.
Twenty-three is a resolution approving a mem-, oh, I'm sorry, I got to read up the vote.
You wanted it to be six.
Five zero. Twenty-three is a resolution approving a memorandum of understanding with Sergeant Bluff, South Sioux City, North Sioux City, Toda Dunes, Woodbury County, for a regional sanitary steward feasibility study and cooperation agreement. I'll move it to start the discussion.
Okay.
Anyone to be heard?
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Mark Simp, City's Director. I just have a brief statement, and then if you have questions, I can sure try and answer those. What you have before you is a resolution to approve a memorandum of understanding between six entities, including five sister cities and Woodbury County, with Sioux City being the largest and, and having the most skin in the game. This would authorize a short-term cooperative agreement whereby HDR Engineering of Omaha, Nebraska, would conduct a phase one study that will identify constraints, fatal flaws, and possible governance structures to develop a regional wastewater authority. The projected completion date of this limited scope is September first of two thousand nineteen, with the termination date of December thirty-first, two thousand nineteen. Cost of the study is ninety-two thousand four hundred and fifty dollars. With that fee being cost shared between the entities, Sioux City's portion is sixty-two percent, or fifty-nine, fifty-seven thousand three hundred and nineteen dollars. This will be financed using the Master Plan CIP unless you direct otherwise. The cost share amount was developed by HDR using what's called a population equivalent, which is commonly used to express strength of wastewater, that includes the volume as well as the makeup of the waste. If the concept of regionalization appears beneficial to each entity, where additional studies are determined to be needed, the methodology and calculations to determine what is equitable would be, would need to be refined, in my opinion. This could be challenging, but would probably not be insurmountable. I think it's important to note that this potential effort is separate from, yet somewhat linked to the discussions we've had, been having about the individual sewage treatment agreements we have with each sister city. The two are easily and understandably confused, but they are separate. The discussions about these agreements should continue regardless of any action on the concept of regionalization. And I'll stop with that with my statement. I do have a list of, of what I think are benefits to this, as well as several things that are, are challenges or concerns that I'd be happy to share if you have questions.
I have a statement. First of all, we're talking about, we're doing a feasibility study with, with a cooperation agreement, which means that we're checking to see if all of us work together as one entity. Is that what you're saying?
On a potential regionalization effort. Right.
Well, I'm not real crazy about that idea, because we're, we have a lot of cities that we'd be working with, and we have sixty-two percent of it. And how are you going to figure out who's going to be the boss and who's, you know, how's that all going to work? And on my other side of it is, we have the plan. How much do we spend to get what we have now? Three hundred million? Would, would that be a good-
We have, right, we have estimates, Rhonda, of between three and four million dollars worth of assets there.
So if, if we bring these other people on board, the way I look at it, I'm not a real rocket scientist here, but I think that they're all going to need to be paying us some money, you know, to start it out, right? Because we have, it's, it's like, you know-
Investment?
Yeah, yeah, it's, it's an investment for them too. So I don't know how it would work. I mean, I, you know, I can't see how it would, and-
That's, that's one of the flaws that I see that, that we need to overcome.
And so if, if we pay money for this, for this, the, the study, we're paying fifty-seven thousand dollars for this study that I'm not crazy about to begin with, I don't think it's going to work, why would we even pay for it? What are they going to tell us that we don't, that we don't feel right now? How, how are they going to convince me that I'm going to want to jump on board with this, when I don't feel comfortable right now with it?
Here are my thoughts. Were you finished?
Pretty much.
Here are my thoughts on the memorandum of, of understanding, Mark, and Mayor, and Council. First of all, I would like to have our city attorney and legal department review this. I don't think they have. References made to the regional area, but it's not defined. I don't know if that's just Woodbury County, since we have five municipalities plus a county. I don't know what regional area is. The stakeholder group meeting, consisting of two members from each entity, I trust that that would be, all their meetings will be held publicly and openly, under the open meetings laws. And I don't see any structure for govern, governance of those, of the stakeholder group. So those are two important points for me. I don't find an early termination provision in the memorandum of under- I don't find an early termination provision in the memorandum of understanding. I know it only goes till December thirty-one of two thousand nineteen, but if for some reason, there's an unforeseen consequence of this agreement, there's no early termination provision. There's no provision governing which law would apply, whether it would be Iowa or Nebraska. And there's no enforceability provision in this agreement. And I want to make sure it's very clear, and I think Rhonda alluded to this, or you alluded to it with comments, I want to make sure that the percentages that are set are for this agreement only and not, won't be binding on, on future steps that we may or may not take. Then, that's a memorandum of understanding, which incorporates by reference the short-form agreement between the owner and HDR Engineering, Inc., and I'd like to have that reviewed by our city attorney as well. The concerns I have there, there's an inconsistency, and this is gonna be one of the minor comments that drives you crazy, Mayor, but the ten percent's referred to, but five percent's shown in the brackets, so I don't know which one applies, but it incorporates a scope of services which are attached as an exhibit to the short-form agreement. And there are some conflicting provisions in the pre-printed portion of that agreement. Controlling law in paragraph five, the reuse, reuse of documents is very restrictive in paragraphs eight. That would need to be reviewed and probably amended considerably, and then paragraph eighteen, no third-party beneficiaries, precludes certain parties having ownership and use of the documents. Now, I can tell as a practical matter, that's not what the intent is, but that's surely what the agreement says. The other concept I would like to have, and I don't think this would be a problem at all, is why put the burden on South Sioux to be the agent under the short-form agreement with HDR Engineering. I think there should be co-agents under this. It's South Sioux City, fine, but also Sioux City, because we have the expertise, we have we have, we have the people that can also work on this, so I, I would like to, and that comes under, I don't know if I'm gonna be able to find it quick enough, but the owner is defined in the short-form agreement as South Sioux City only, and there's really no mention of the other municipalities or the county, and I, I think we need to have that. I know it's borderline probably doing a legal review, but I can't help myself on that. I just, I don't think that the agreement's clear at all. And I would like to, like I said, I'd like to refer this agreement to city legal, city attorney. If you've already looked at it, I apologize ahead of time, but I don't believe you have. So that's where I am with this. Is some kind of a deferral action. Really work through this and then start talking about the concept of the feasibility study. I don't have a problem, Rhonda, in sharing in the expense of the feasibility study. I, I think it's probably a good exercise for all of us to, to tackle. The mayor's been quoted in the paper several times that the agreements that we're operating in under are very ancient agreements, and there, there's a lot of work to be done. And that's, that's even aside from the ongoing issues, Mark, that we have, not only in Sioux City, but in the other communities as well. And, and there might be other communities or even, you know, that fall within this definition of regional area, whatever that means.
I, for one, would not be for a deferral. I want to vote today. You can make the motion, and then we can vote that way, but. I, I've said from the very beginning, I know what a conflict of interest is, I think, and I see a real conflict of interest when you have people that have historically worked for one entity in this agreement, and my preference would have been, as I stated from the very beginning, I didn't hide this from anybody. Go find somebody, I don't care who it is, that has no interest and no dog in despite, and, you know, HDR and JEO have a long history in, formerly in Lance's trying to get a sewer plant in South Sioux, and I'm uncomfortable with that. I'll just say it publicly. I'm, I'm very uncomfortable with that because ultimately, who are they going to work for? And I'd like to know, I don't know, because you can tell me, well, it doesn't matter, it's only this agreement baloney. It's just like the parks director. We start with a little bit, and then once you hook 'em, you just keep reeling them in and reeling them in when it comes to engineers. I've been around way too long to know what's gonna happen down the road. And I don't know that HD, HDR, and I know they're a great firm, I know they have a lot of history in Nebraska, but I don't know their history in Iowa, if they've done sewer plants or not. I'm, without knowing that, a little bit uncomfortable for me, and I don't think JEO has ever designed a big one. And you're talking seventy, eighty million dollar project here at a minimum. And again, I'm not comfortable having met with them. I met the first time with Bob and the other, that we have a real understanding of the value of our plant. It seems like they would like us to just throw that in the mix, and I'm not, I'm not about to vote sixty million dollars, it's fifty-two percent, for our ratepayers to go buy another sewer plant. I'm not gonna do that. If they build their own, we have extra capacity right out of the box. So why would I want to vote for this, causing my ratepayers to have to pay more? It makes no sense to me. Nobody's, nobody's made sense to me on this whole thing, so.
I agree.
And I'm kind of in the same area financially. I'm, I'm concerned about what it may end up costing in the long run. I'd like to know from you and your best guess, I mean, we're gonna continue to negotiate with the sister cities? Yes or no? Yes?
Yeah, we're very active in that regard.
And do you think it's reasonable to expect that we can reach an agreeable understanding of how we'll proceed?
Yes.
In the future, maybe both financially and, and what their contributions will be to not only?
To the benefit of both.
Yes, yes, and I, I'm, I'm, I'm in favor of continuing forward with, with negotiations with sister cities before we start spending a lot of money here. And I'm, I'm a little worried about what the cost will be in the long run if, if we get that far, and I, I too don't wanna I, I think we have a good wastewater treatment plant and, and, and great people running the operation, and I think we can work to the advantage and the betterment of the community to include taxpayers, and, and I'd like to see how far that will take us, and if you know, if one or more doesn't feel like that's appropriate for them, that they can make that decision on their behalf, but it will increase our capacity, which is, because the other side of the coin is, I think I'm a little, we're a little stymied. We don't really have the capacity should a great economic development opportunity present itself. And so we do need to work on improving that capacity, I think, but, but I'd, I'd rather be a little bit slower with, you know, proceed with our negotiations, be a little bit slower to commit to a regional facility until I know that it just wouldn't work any other way.
I want to know what the advantage would be, because at this time, I haven't seen anything, and, you know, we're talking South Sioux plus the other ones added, and, you know, we do have a little problem there in South Sioux, so, you know, I don't want to take on that that history either.
Right. I can, I can share with you my opinion if you'd like, and by the way, HDR and JEO are represented here in the audience tonight, so if you want to have them share, they sure can, but I guess my opinion on what the benefits are is you, you spread out the burden of wastewater treatment amongst all these entities, and there's advantages probably to that, and having a, a regional board that would oversee that, that effort. We obviously would have some resolution to our concerns about capacity, as Pete mentioned. Technically, we would not gain capacity, we would simply realize capacity that already exists that's been allocated, so it would, we would receive it without having additional expense to do that. So that's, that's another advantage to this. If South Sioux were to build their own wastewater facility, which I think is, is a somewhat reasonable thought here. I would generally assume that the regional authority, should one be established, would own and arrange for the operation of the wastewater plant and have full responsibility for operation and maintenance of the facilities, as well as the enforcement issues that we frequently deal with with industrial pretreatment, as well as compliance that we have to maintain with the state and federal government.
Okay, so Mark.
Those are some advantages.
Okay, so my question is, who's gonna own the wastewater treatment plant then?
Mark, maybe I can answer that. If, the way I envision, if we go to a true regional plant, there will be a regional board established, and they will have to have bonding authority to, to more or less go out and buy our assets from us. That's where I think it gets a little hazy on what it would take for this regional board to buy the asset. We can't just simply say we're gonna regionalize, and we're gonna, everybody's gonna continue to own their own little pieces, and we're just gonna throw it in one big pie. I think if we're truly gonna do it right, we have to follow a model where a quasi-governmental or governmental entity takes the complete ownership of our plant and any other plants that we built and operates it as a single entity, independent of the communities, other than having board members on that committee. That's kind of been a sticky point to some extent on how that asset gets transferred and how the city of Sioux City gets made whole if that were to happen.
And the one other, I guess, advantage I see, if you were to want to do this, would be, as you know, we've got communities that we serve in three states, and industries in each of those states. We also have a complicating factor in that there's, we technically are, are kind of beholden to two EPA regions, because South Dakota's in a different EPA region. Now, I say that loosely because I think generally EPA Region Seven or EPA Region Eight have kind of agreed that seven will look after, you know, Sioux City. But that's created, I think, some jurisdictional complications, some legal complications, and I'm certainly not trying to pretend to play lawyer at all here. But whether it be the FOG program or, or other issues of concern, we, we kind of come down on two sides. EPA is telling us that we need to administer enforcement in all of those jurisdictions, and yet we do hear from our legal department that they think that's problematic. And I don't disagree with our legal department, so it's, it's challenging, and perhaps a regional entity would, would overcome that. I don't know. With those things, I don't think it's fair for me to share that without sharing my concerns then, or questions. I think there, and Rhonda kind of alluded to this, I believe, some significant unresolved concerns or obligations with some industries. And there appear to be limitations that some sister cities may have, making it difficult for us, to assist us with enforcement actions or with the collection of fines or user charges. Those difficulties can and have resulted in equipment damage and loss of adequate treatment at the wastewater plant at times. And resolution for those things have become very difficult. And we've already talked about the transfers of assets. I think that's above my pay grade here, but I think that is a concern. And maybe it's just my own personal complaint here, but the memorandum of understanding, when it was distributed, I was left off of that distribution, so I did not receive it even until after the county had voted on this, and I think that Bob and I had the understanding that Sioux City would be the first to look at this, and yet one or two of the entities have already voted on it, which I think has put us in a difficult position, so.
So that explains my concern why this wouldn't have gone to the city attorney in the first instance before it comes to council. How many agreements do we get presented to us if the city attorney comments on?
And I guess, Stanford clarification, we did receive a copy of it as it was coming to the agenda, but it's already been passed.
Thing is, is if, if they're not playing ball real fair, then, if, if they're going ahead and doing their, doing it ahead of us. Am I correct?
Well, and I, I appreciate you bringing that up, Mark. That was something that I had concerns about, and then Dan just furthered those concerns with pointing out some of the inconsistencies, because I was not trained in law school and didn't catch some of those things. But I think that that is what's troubling, right, is the, the timing of everything, of how people went ahead and decided that they would vote for this, and before our legal team got to take a look at it and get any feedback that we would have even if, I, which maybe I am, I really think that, like Dan said, maybe it would be a good exercise to talk about this. We talk about a mega site, we talk about the ability to expand economic development, this would really allow us that opportunity. However, I think there are a lot of questions and a lot of concerns out there, and, and quite frankly, the process that it's been going through thus far does not really allow itself, those opportunities to question that or to adapt that or change that, because they've passed it as read, and now we're trying to say, well, we want to make some of these adjustments.
Mayor and Council, with all due respect, I think in the scheme of things, Dan points out some very valid points, but I think the larger issue is, is the city of Sioux City interested right now in exploring regionalization? And in talking with Mark, we can see the pros, we can see the cons. To be honest, I don't know if the timing is right, right now. As you know, we have some EPA and IDNR issues that we're working through. We have some, we have our biogas project that we're working through. The more I think about this, I think we need to get some of those things done and resolved. City of South Sioux's got some issues with a major industry, but they, they're also doing planning on a new wastewater treatment plant. I think those things need to be resolved. A big issue we have is if, if we go down this biogas project and then we regionalize, what happens to the revenue potential that the city of Sioux City could have achieved? That now goes to the regional entity. I think those things all have to be determined whether we want to make that leap before we enter into a memorandum of understanding. Okay. Anyone to be heard?
We're just a study, is that what we're doing?
Either voting yes or no for the study, yeah.
Well, I mean, we're voting on what's in front of us, and I can't the document that's in front of us, and I can't support what's in front of us without having it sued by city legal, so. And I can count to three, and I don't think I'm gonna have a three votes for a deferral to have the city attorney study it, so.
Well, you can certainly make a motion to that effect. Hey, I've lost three or four times. It doesn't upset me to take one for the team like, like I've done today.
I'm on board.
You can't stand rejection? You're in the wrong job.
They might compare our records.
Lose more than I win, that's for sure.
Well, you know what? I think I will. I, I think I'll, there's a motion on the floor, right?
Yes.
So I can move to defer this item until such time a city legal has reviewed it. I don't know if you do want to date certain.
Or a dilution, and we can put it back.
Is there a timeline on this thing? Mark?
There is, no, is there, Mark? I would just caution if the ultimate vote would be to not to proceed with the MOU. I don't know you'd want to burden staff with a review of something that's gonna ultimately fail anyways. Which I guess, for me, gets back to the general, do we want to explore regionalization? Yes or no, at this time?
I, I kind of do, but not even remotely close to this agreement.
And that's what I was gonna say, is I'm, I'm all about exploring that opportunity. I just don't think, I think you bring up a great point as far as timing, and then I also agree with the So I, I would definitely want to explore that in the future. I just don't think it's the right timing.
I was just gonna say, if you want to explore this, then, you know, I'm fine with spending the money, but if you don't want to explore this, I think it's a waste of everybody's money to.
I think we also ought to consider who our partners are, and if they, you know, I can't at work. I'm not real impressed right now that two people jumped ahead of us and we didn't even know about it, you know, I mean, that's two of our partners.
I don't know that that's a huge deal. I'm not
Well, I, you know what?
I know what you're saying, but that's not, to me, that's not as
That's maybe not as big an issue as, I don't think that's gonna fly. I just don't think it's gonna work at this point, but.
Well, I think my motion to defer died for lack of a second, so.
Okay. Okay.
Waiting for me?
Have to vote.
Vote now, Dan.
Lonely place.
Just abstain, it's no big deal.
I can't accept what's in front of us.
That, or fails 5-0.
What are our next steps, Mark?
Continue with no, continue with negotiation?
All because the meetings have been held between the sister cities and Sioux cities, so what message do we want to send on, what are you going to say on this?
Well, we've certainly had a number of meetings with this entire group related to this particular subject, but we've met individually with each sister city, and those meetings, I think, have been productive. I think there's an interest in renegotiating these agreements, and we just need to walk through each one, one at a time, and see what's, everybody feels in the best interest of both sides. Once we have something that I think is reasonable for our legal to review, then I'd like to turn it over to them to review that document, and if they're in agreement, then bring it to you, as well as their city council or board. So I think that's the best approach, and that's the direction we're going, so...
Hey, thanks.
I think we're very close on one of those right now, within a couple of weeks of turning it over to our legal department.
There's some concerns, Mr. Eifner.
How are you guys? My name's Dolph Eifner, and it seems lately I've been a complainer, and I don't want to be a complainer, but...
Clean those trees up on the...
Oh, maybe it's been three or four years ago, when it came across that the Floyd River, we got re-designated in the flood zone because we didn't have any ponding capabilities. I scoffed at that, saying, "I've lived here for my whole life, I've never seen that dike full of water, that's BS." Well, as they say, I've come to Jesus. In the last two, in the last six months, two times, I've seen that mother full, and I call Kelly and Paul Dakers on the phone at night, "Did all those gates close? You got all those gates closed? Make sure those gates close." So I was wondering where we're at on dealing with the ponding issue, you know, because if we would have had a major rain event two weeks ago, man, we would have flooded on our side of the dike, I mean, there's no question about it. So I'm just asking, you know, and I've been talking to the engineering, and usually what these issues come up to is just financing, and where is the money available for? And in the last six months, I feel more concerned, and I know you guys have spent a lot of time and energy on that area, a little bit to no avail from the last project, but don't abandon us. So, and also, it seems as though I'm in a situation where I have the property for the ponding for both the Lees project and also on 28th Street, between 28th and 18th Street, I have like 30 acres there, too, and it seems like what we need is just a big hole and engineering, and so I would gladly, you know...
You'd gladly donate that ground, what a guy. Is that what I hear?
The one on 28th Street to get me the flood plain, because I, because I can't get a mortgage on that property, I, you could squeeze me pretty hard if you got me out of the flood plain, I'll tell you that right now.
I'm not sure that, and I can almost tell you what FEMA's going to say, that won't solve the flooding, but, and you know, the problem I have is, we talk about putting a pump out there and pumping it back in, but if it's full, what good does that do? If it goes over the top, you can't put any more back in, right?
No, that's why, that's why the pump is the best concept, that's why the big hole is, seems to be, and holes are easier to fill than keeping pumps running.
So what's, is, can you build a big hole and just store water?
We are working on that right now, yes. We have a design going forward where we're putting in retention at One Fun Place for, at the Jolly Time.
Yeah.
Yes, for retention base now at that point, where it eliminate most of the flooding, not all. We brought that forward, a presentation last year.
What about down on 28th, where he's got property?
I don't recall that one off the top of my head.
There's been, I don't think there's...
Well, I don't know if it's addressing that.
No, it doesn't address mine further down.
It doesn't?
I'm on the other side of the river, and it's from 18th to 28th.
Right.
Is where that area is, and you're working on the one with Jolly Time and stuff, that's Lees, but this one is...
He's talking down...
By where they park all the school buses.
Right.
Basically.
Can you look into that and let Dolph know? All right, we'll get, try to get you an answer.
Before that, I just always thought it was such a joke, it was like, oh, the dike's never full, what are you talking about? Man, I've driven over the dike two times now, my eyes are bugging out of my head.
It's a big man to admit when you're wrong, Dolph.
Yeah, and you can't stop water.
All right.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else to be heard? Being done, we'll go to council concerns. Do we have young people here today?
I was going to say, before we start, we actually have, I think, is it one class or is it multiple classes from Morningside College?
Oh, great, from the men and women of the M.
You better believe it. If you guys want to come up and just introduce yourselves and say what you're here for, or maybe what you want to go into, that'd be awesome. We have Dr. Hennings and Dr. McKinley.
Go ahead.
It's great to be here with Council Patrick McKinley, Morningside College. This is a group of second-year students and their mentors. We're trying to attempt to help our students connect to their major, to the community, and to their own ways of contributing back in terms of ethical leadership and civic responsibility. So I'll let the students introduce themselves, but no better way to learn about giving back to the community than to be a part of watching council do its business.
You probably should have picked a better meeting than this one.
I was going to say, they got to hear a lot of this one.
They picked the good one out.
You got your money's worth.
Introduce yourself, and maybe where you're from and what you're interested in studying.
Okay, my name's Kalen Minker, I'm from Mobile, Iowa. I'm a political science major, and I am interested in going into law.
Oh, all right.
Hey.
Oh, no.
I'm Sadie Myring, I'm from Platte, South Dakota. My majors are political science, business, and legal studies, and I'm interested in law and politics.
All right.
Oh, my God.
Oh, boy.
You want to deal with this?
You really made my day after a rough meeting.
I'm going to start forwarding my email.
Please don't tell me you want to be a lawyer, too.
Yeah.
Actually, yes. My name is Josh Brown, and I'm from Del Rapids, South Dakota, junior political science major, and, yeah, I do plan to go to law school.
Except for you.
Go for paralegal first, that's a fair one.
Don't ruin the record now, right?
So I don't want to go to law school.
Good, there you go, Josh, stay the day.
Josh Shandler, I'm from Germany, I'm majoring in political science with a minor in sustainability. I'm also currently interning here, so thank you for that.
Yes, welcome.
And I'm trying to go into either environmental protection or human rights.
Awesome, big job.
And Dr. Hennings as well, yeah, is a professor.
Good job.
Thanks for coming.
Thanks for coming, guys.
Anyone else?
If you don't mind sticking around, I wouldn't mind talking to you afterwards. We're almost done.
Mr. Greitken, what do you have?
No, sir, I think I've already shared my concerns with the city manager, we're solved.
I'm tired. I talked too much today.
Call John O'Brien directly. Thanks, Alex.
Yeah, exactly, I was going to say. It is, I tell you what, I'm going to be good, Mayor, I'm okay.
What?
I'm going to be good, we got to...
Bob, did you hear that?
What's Thursday?
Alex, so have nothing. Do we have something Thursday?
Oh, yeah, 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 utilities recognition. That's right, I forgot on Thursday, a couple of things, actually, we have a, oh, yeah.
Sorry.
Yep, it'll be the utilities recognition ceremony at 12:30, 1:30 PM here in the council chambers. So the men and women of the utilities department do incredible work, and so I'm excited to be a part of that, hopefully be here to help recognize them. So thank you, thanks for the reminder.
You're very welcome. I have nothing further.
I move we adjourn.
Scott. Pat.
Aye.
Waters.
Aye.
Capron.
Aye.
Greitken.
Aye.
Boar.
Aye.
Yeah, can students do a picture with us up here, if you don't mind?